Roll.
Freary.
Here.
Mr. Latif.
Here.
Ms. Osterlich.
Here.
Mr. Daley.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Hope.
Here.
Chairman Goodman.
Here. First order of business would be to review the minutes from the May meeting. Anyone have any comments or wish to make a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, we accept the minutes.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll.
Mr. Freary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Osterlich?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes. Minutes are passed. If we could call the first order of business?
The appeal of Eugene Haber, 1322 Myron Street, Niskiuna, New York, for a variance from Section 220-18B-3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskiuna to construct a 520-square-foot garage on the property noted above. The property is located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district. Section 220-18B-3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures are shall be the same as applies to the principal building. As defined, major accessory structures are detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The garage at 520 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IC establishes the side setback requirement as 15 feet and the rear setback requirement as 20 feet. As proposed, the garage will be located 0 feet from the side property line and 18 feet from the rear property line. Therefore, both a 15-foot side yard setback variance and a 2-foot rear yard setback variance are required.
Okay, you call it. I think there are two members of the board who have to address the issue.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself from the case due to a potential conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you.
And I do the same, I'd like to recuse myself for conflict of interest.
Okay. We do have an alternate member who can come up and sit. If, okay, if you could continue, thank you.
14 letters were sent out, zero responses.
Okay, and the minute should reflect the change of membership for the meeting. Okay, if the applicant could please come forward? Sir, we're operating tonight because of two recusals with six people who can vote on your application. You are required to have four votes, be it four out of six or four out of seven. There are other alternate members. If you choose, you can adjourn this to a point where we could have a full board.
I'm fine.
Okay. So if you could set forth your application, the reasons for it, and what efforts you made to mitigate the need for a variance, and why, what reasons you might not have been able to mitigate that need?
I don't know if you
Doctor, you just walk into the mic.
Okay, I don't know if you guys have received the outline and some of the document.
We have, but just we do some of this on the oral record as well.
So, so the, basically, straight for the record, right now, the current structure sits on the property line. So it's, that's, you know, that's where the current structure is. So it's not, I'm not moving to the property line, it's currently on the property line. It's, and what I'm looking to do, again, was to expand the structure, move it back two feet, and essentially I have a garage and I have a shed, and essentially incorporate one structure. So that the issue of the zero variance on the property line, the way I see it is, essentially, it's no change, it already exists on the property line. So I'm not putting it to the property line. The issue of the distance at the back, it's, I've spoken to both neighbors who live behind me, neither of whom have a problem with being 18 feet versus 20 feet. Right now, the, it's just sort of a somewhat, I guess, semi-barren area. Both of my structures are in extremely poor shape. They've been chewed through by squirrels and critters, and they live in there. I mean, it's, it's not a very tenable structure, and quite frankly, I don't think the structure's gonna hold up much longer. It's, the rear wall is not holding up well. It's, so it's, it, at a point, realistically, is going to need to be replaced anyways. So my hope was with, and essentially, both structures encourage animals to live in there. There's holes chewed through, I mean, not, not good structures, either of them. So my hope was to be able to create one structure that I would have essentially shed space at the back, car space in the front. The other thing we're trying to do, and the reason for the 2-foot variance at the back, is the, the current layout and its proximity to the house makes, it's a two-car garage, so getting out of the one, one garage is a pretty tight S-curve. And if, you know, I'm allowed to do this, the idea was just to make it less difficult getting in and out of this. It's, it's a two-car garage, so.
And you can't move it over because then it would sit behind the house and you wouldn't be able to drive.
It's even further behind the house, exactly. So unfortunately, that would require me to try to push it back even further, which would mess with things. I mean, it's, and it's to do, you know, a major overhaul in terms of, let's say, try to shove the garage around the back of the house. I mean, that's a substantial structural change, and that's not, and quite frankly, it wouldn't even be fitting with the rest of the neighborhood with the way other garages are designed through Old Niskiuna, so.
And it would take away your whole backyard.
Essentially, yes, yeah. So, you know, it's, we've been, you know, hoping to do this for a while. This sort of seemed like a reasonable time to try to accomplish this project. So, you know, I'm not able to have a snow blower because there's, I have no place to put it. It doesn't, it doesn't fit, it wouldn't fit in the garage I have now, which is, just fits the two cars. So, and the structure is just completely falling down, completely falling apart. I mean, I have, if you want, I had, I did take some pictures of the structure itself if anybody needs any verification that it's not in good shape. So, that's sort of the essence of it.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, Dr. Haber, while I'd been by the house, I didn't pull into the driveway, but it appears that the shed that's there now, and it appears, I'm also looking at the photo diagram that you drew on there, sits, actually sits back closer to the property line, the rear property line as it exists now, is that right?
Closer than?
In other words, what I'm
It's not 20 feet, if that's what you mean.
No, 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 I'm not worried about that. I'm, I'm just trying to see where the new, the rear of the new structure would be, which is 18 feet from the rear property line. Does the shed actually, in its current position, sit even further back than that 18 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, in actuality, you would be removing that and providing however much more yard space, which would then take you to the back of the new structure. That would all be open where there's a shed there now.
Correct.
Okay. And so that shed's gonna be removed, just one structure?
Correct.
The new structure, again, is gonna be a two-car garage, I realize, with some storage, additional storage in it?
Correct.
Okay. It also appeared, and again, I didn't drive in the driveway, but it appears that, do you have a patio behind the house, or is?
Yes.
Okay. So it looks like by moving the, by moving, and then, the front of the structure, is it going to be in the same location as the front of the structure now, or is it gonna actually move back a little bit?
My, my hope was to move it back like 2 feet.
Because it looks like it'll take it back and essentially not be right on top of the patio next to it, but be back a little bit.
Right.
And that's the plan.
Right, and it's, and it's sort of less about the patio than it is just about the in and out of, I mean, our car's gotten scraped up just because trying to cut it, and.
I understand.
So, but, but yeah, the total space at the back would be greater than the current space.
What about the, what about the, the look or the appearance of the garage? What's the plan for that? Have you figured out what type of garage? I assume you're gonna try and get a animal-proof garage.
That's, that's the goal, to have it, so it, you know, it will, the floor, you know, would have to be repoured, you know, the, the sides have to be redone. And, you know, right now, it's, it's, it's just chewed through.
No, I understand, so essentially, it's gonna be on the same.
But it will essentially look the same. I mean, I don't have a specific design of the garage, for example, roofline, et cetera. It essentially will look pretty much the same from, from the road.
Be no taller than the garage that's there now? There's nothing that's gonna go up?
No, no, that's, no, my intent is certainly not to be taller. It might even be a little shorter, because there's actually like a crawl space up above.
The current garage.
The current garage, which I don't really feel compelled to have crawl space. It's, it's not, it's not useful.
So other than moving it back 2 feet towards the property line, is it essentially on the same footprint as the current garage?
Yes.
Okay, so the new one, that, that 2-foot area is different, back 2 feet and 2 feet back from the rear wall where it is now, but otherwise, you're sitting on the same footprint?
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
Sir? And that's gonna blend in with the neighborhood?
Yes, I mean, you know, certainly from the street, it's gonna look exactly the same, because the addition is on the backside. So, you know, the, the garage, the garage that faces the street now will essentially have the same appearance. I mean, you know, right now, it's, Cedar Shakes are, is what the garage is. I may not do Cedar Shakes, I, I, my, my goal is to like do Cedar Shakes on the front side, probably do siding around the rest of it. It just kind of makes more sense from, from that standpoint. But from the street, it would look the same because you're not seeing the back end.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Yeah, may I inquire, is your facing the front of your house, on the right-hand side, you got two driveways that are right next to each other, correct?
Correct.
And your neighbors to the right-hand side, do you have a chance to talk to them about this?
They're here, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna speak their piece.
Okay.
They'll object.
Well, we'll let them speak for themselves. How old, how old is the garage?
The garage? You know, that's, it's a good question. The house was built in '33. So I, I'm not exactly sure how old that garage is. I don't think it's quite that old.
How long have you been in the house?
I've been in the house, October will be 13 years.
And it's always been there as long as you've been?
Yes. I mean, I, you know, I suspect it was maybe built in the 50s. I honestly don't know. I have no documentation to, for that.
Thank you.
We don't have anything, since it's on the property line, we don't have any indication that this was a variance at any previous time?
Any other questions? Sir, anything else you wish to add?
No, other than, you know, I appreciate the chance to, to speak. I just, you know, if, if anybody has any question about the validity of the structure, I did take some photographs, if anybody wants to verify that in any way, how poor, what, what poor shape the structure is in now. And so, before it gets any worse, before it causes any damage, before anything worse happens, it sort of seemed like it's time to, time to upgrade it, and if we could, if I can do, do this little bit of addition with having the, essentially, shed space at the back end of the garage would be immensely helpful for ease of being a homeowner, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I ask if anyone in the audience wishes to be heard for or against the application? If you could please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I am Kate Rudin, we live at 1318 Myron Street.
You just walk into the mic, ma'am.
Yep, I live at 1318 Myron Street. We've lived there for almost 16 years. And the garage, like, obviously, vermin are in and around the area, but the, the garage and the shed, really, the problem with it is no different, there's no more animals in his shed than are in my garage, it's just not maintained. There's holes in the roof, the holes have been there for a long time, there's rocks on top of the holes, so it's been a deteriorating structure for a very long period of time. The way, I don't know if you can see it from the top, there's an 8-foot space between our garages, that 8-foot space is our property. And we have a single-car garage with the same difficulty pulling into our garage space, and we actually can't even park our cars in there. We also have two cars, because our garage is used as a shed. So is that, I can appreciate the fact that, you know, it's difficult to maneuver the cars in and out. We have the exact same problems with almost the exact same layout with the garage being tucked behind. With it being a two-car garage in our neighborhood, that in and of itself is an exception for a structure in our neighborhood. A majority of our neighborhood does only have single-car garages, and a majority of them, there's one neighbor, they can't even get to their garage, because I think they used to drive on somebody else's driveway, because it's, you know, dirt, like, that's Old Niskiuna. The, the, how, the garages really weren't meant for automobiles as big and as long as we currently drive. So our garage is not usable as a car, I mean, we could, but then again, same as our snow blower and all those things, we would not be able to maintenance that. Our problem is that we were never really happy that the garage was directly on our property line. That does impede our structure. If anything needs to happen with his structure, it needs to be gone on to for our yard. And having a structure of that size, our house is 1,600 square feet, so our bottom-floor footprint is probably about 750. So this would essentially, for our neighborhood, almost be like building a house in the backyard. This structure is right along our property line, so pushing the structure back 2 feet, adding 2 feet, that's going to be half of the length of our property with a two-car garage directly upon our property line, with us incurring all the water damage that happens with the runoff. Our garage does take on water, we do have, you know, vermin and whatnot coming into our garage, because, you know, the wood gets wet. My husband has had to repair our garage. We just recently had to have it re, you know, shingled, because we were having the same problems with squirrels. But that's clearly not, a new structure is not going to be vermin-proof. Their squirrels are still gonna get in. What you need to do is maintenance your structure, maintain your structure, and do what you can do to keep the vermin out. But coming along our property, we are directly along the property line, so we incorporate all of their water. A lot of the snow, you know, blows off onto ours, so being that they're already adjoining property structures, we already take a lot of that water runoff onto our property. Also feel that if there was a structure excavated to this extent, literally on our property line, it would potentially, our structure isn't super sound. Ours, I believe, was built with the house. I really think that ours would crumble, our foundation does have cracks in it. Our slab does have cracks in it, that if there was an excavation to this magnitude, I'm pretty confident that our property would suffer. His driveway is literally right next to his house. So he has, our driveways are the same, but ours has, like bushes next to it. So we kind of take more of the burden of the space. So I also fear that if he were to have a construction project of this magnitude, it would have to somehow deteriorate from our driveway, which we do everything to maintain, our garage, which we do everything to maintain, and it just doesn't seem like it's fair, because there's a reason for the building codes. There's a reason why it needs to be 15 feet set back and 20 feet back from the other side. That if he truly wants to make the structure bigger, don't have it be along my property line, have it take, like, if you want a shed, we don't have a shed, and we don't park cars in our garage. If you want additional space, incorporate that space into your own living footprint, and don't take more from our living footprint. I just think a structure, that would be almost the entire length of our backyard, and that would definitely deteriorate from the openness that we bought the house for.
This was built in 1933 supposedly, it's
Yeah, I think ours was built in 19
Do you have any damage on your, on your property now?
From?
From his garage?
No, just the runoff, it runs into his, just where we are, Regent Street's higher, so our garage kicks along.
Is there any damage done to your foundation?
No, not essentially from his, but just from excess water living at Old Niskiuna. His property's a little bit higher than ours, so the runoff from his roofline comes down into the 8-foot space, as long as, as obviously, our water goes down there too, and it comes through the floor in our basement between the garage space.
All right, okay, let's back up a minute. On the runoff, does it affect your property?
Yeah, it does, because our garage is deteriorating.
But it doesn't affect your foundation on your place?
On my place, no.
No, and it doesn't affect the, the only thing you're concerned about is the runoff? Where's it gonna go? Where is, where has it been going?
Well, it's been going onto our property. Right, it's been going onto our property, but obviously, before then, there was no variances to keep structures set back from the property lines. He was, that garage or whoever built it was allowed to build with absolutely no space.
Ms. Rudin, you say they had 8 feet between your garage and his garage? And it's my understanding, and I could be corrected if I'm inaccurate, he's building on the exact same footprint that currently exists right now, with the exception that it's gonna be 2 feet farther back, not 2 feet closer to your property. That's the only exception, or the only difference between the origin, the structure that exists now versus what is anticipated. So I'm, I'm just asking if I'm missing something?
Well, I don't know, like I said, we found out about it when the letter that we got last week to appear here, I didn't know that I was supposed to respond, it just had the court date, so I just thought we had to show up. If there's going to be a new cement floor poured, that's clearly gonna provide or make structural damage to my property, because there is only an 8-foot space to my garage, which already has cracked foundation and cracked sides. So if it were built on the exact same footprint, no additional cement slab, obviously, there'd be nothing I could do about that. But I don't know if he's planning on a complete tear-out and putting an entire new structure, because that would essentially be building a house. It's almost the size of my house in my
Well, it's the same, it's basically the same structure that exists right now, right?
Now, but if it were bigger, if it was 2 feet bigger and 2 feet further set back, there'd be 2 more feet of driveway that is impeded along on mine with no, zero.
Let's see if we can do it this way. As I'm facing Dr. Haber's house, your house is
To the right.
Okay.
Our driveway's a butt.
Okay. Just so you're aware, give you a little information. Dr. Haber could actually tear down the existing garage and rebuild it on the exact same footprint, not move it anywhere, and he wouldn't even need to be here. He, he could do that as of a matter of right, because he's not, even though it seems kind of strange, and he's on the property line, he could do that rebuild without getting, getting a variance, because his, his structure is not being moved, and it predates the zoning ordinance, okay? And, and again, I saw it from afar, so you probably have a better perspective than me. But I assume what's there now looks pretty bad. Do you agree?
Honestly, no, no worse than mine.
Well, let's talk about his, okay?
No, but you're saying, does his look?
What I'm saying, does his right now, you said, I think we, there's, there's holes in the roof?
But that's the back shed, the garage, the structure, it seems to me very sound. It was reshingled a couple of years ago, it's the shed that's falling apart. But the garage is in better shape than ours.
If, okay, and, and again, I'm trying not to, I, I wanna just stick with his garage for a second, okay? Because that's what's in front of us. So removing that garage and putting up a new structure, I assume would look better?
I think it would look the same.
Okay. The shed is going to be torn down, which I assume would be a plus, right?
I, I would assume so.
Okay. So by removing the shed, it creates a little bit more space in the back of the property, even though the plan is to move it 2 feet, move it about that far back. So your concern is noted in terms of during, i- if this were done, if this were approved and done, you would want to make sure that there was no, during the construction process, the removal of the slab, the pouring of the slab, the construction, whatever it was, that there was no, no physical damage that was done to, I assume, that 8-foot buffer area that was, that essentially is where you're, from the property line over to where your garage is, that's
The entire 8 feet is my property?
Right, that's what I'm saying, is you want to make sure, you want to make sure that there's no damage that's done to that
Yeah.
by the construction process.
Yeah.
And so theoretically, if Dr. Haber could assure you that that would be restored, and, and once construction would done, it'd be put back in the same condition or better condition, however it looks at this point, would that be suitable to you?
No, because honestly, I have zero confidence on him maintaining his word.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, is that having dealt with a lot of construction, both commercial and residential, one of the concerns is you don't leave it in a rough, raw condition when you're done. You make sure that it's in a finished, nice, finished, suitable condition for all people involved, Dr. Haber, yourself, the neighbors to the rear, that type of thing. So if that was done, would that be agreeable?
I have zero confidence that he would do that, given prior
But you're not listening to me, ma'am.
Can I have, can I, I need clarification on something. Ms. Robertson, I, on previous cases, it was my understanding that if something came down on a space and they wanted to rebuild in these circumstances, they, they would need to come for a variance.
It's an act of God, it's an act of God provision. So like, if a tree fell on it, and he was building it back in the exact same spot, he would, he'd just get a building permit. But if he chooses to take it down and wants to build it in the back, in the exact same spot, then he still needs variance.
So he would need a variance to take this structure down and build in the exact same location?
Yeah, it's because pre-existing, non-conforming.
Right, he, he can repair this structure, but he can't do a complete rip-down and rebuild without a variance.
Right, like, I mean, I think if there's a fire and the whole thing burns down, there's provisions for rebuilding from something natural, like, or a tree or something that basically destroys it. But like, if, we have always said, because we see this with 6-foot fences and things, like, if you choose to take it down, even if you're putting it back in the exact same spot.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what my understanding was.
And we've
I wanted to get a clarification.
And we looked to see if there's any history on this property with variances?
Right, it has no previously granted variances. It's, but like, most of the garages in this neighborhood, they're built when the houses were built. So it's, I mean, you're talking like 20s, 30s, 40s, and our zoning code with setbacks didn't get implemented until the 70s.
I, I find it curious that there would be a two-car garage back then. So do we know if there was an addition on that garage?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
If in fact, there was, if in fact, there was something added or changed after the zoning ordinance went into place, because it sits on the property line, it would require a variance, safe to say.
Yeah.
And you have no record of any variance being granted?
What she, what she said is they didn't look for an addition. They only were looking for the additional, is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only thing that might be a little complicating is if the original garage was on the property line, and then addition went towards the house. I would probably choose to deny that and bring it to the zoning board, but I think that's almost an interpretation of the building inspector. So if it's not getting any closer to the lot line, then you may not have gone, then they may not have had to go to the zoning board.
There have been building permits that you could have found, or, or do they go that? Do you go back that far in the building permits you have in the records?
Not very often, but if it was done after the 70s.
Then you would see it.
Yeah.
And what role does the shared driveway play in this situation?
It doesn't, it's, it's not considered a shared driveway.
It's just kind of a budding, not really shared.
Unless there's an easement, if they're touching on the property line and the pavement just goes together, but there isn't an easement on one side or the other, it's not considered a shared driveway unless you actually but there isn't an easement on one side or the other, it's not considered a shared driveway unless you actually need an easement from your adjacent property owner in order to be able to access your garage. So as long as, I mean, I think generally speaking, you know, eight feet, ten feet, as long as there's eight feet or ten feet of pavement on either side, they're adjacent driveways, but probably not actually shared driveways.
And then just the, I guess my only thing, other thing is, generally we get a plan for what the structure is gonna look like. You know, all we have here is looking above and hearing that, you know, what exists right now has a crawl space above and, you know, this isn't gonna have one and, you know, there's a shed and this isn't gonna have, you know, you know, we're, we're looking at something and we're not having what it's gonna look like.
What is the approval process following, if the board was to approve the variance, what would be the next steps? He would get a, he would have to go to the planning board, or?
Nope. He would need to submit building plans and likely a structure this size would have to be engineered. So, um, and, cause he's not asking for a height variance, it'd have to be under fifteen feet.
And what about some of the concerns that are raised in terms of, uh, the runoff and those issues?
So that is reviewed at building permit. I mean, essentially the town engineering department would do its absolute best to make sure that it doesn't make the drainage situation worse. They don't, they're not required to make it better, but they are required to sort of show good faith effort that it's the same or better. It can't be worse. So, you know, if, if right now the roof is tipped towards that property line and it's, you know, twenty square feet, I'm just making up numbers, and now the roof tipped towards that property and it's forty square feet, they, he would probably have to do something to divert the water like back under his property because of the additional runoff, something like gutters or something.
Just, just wanted to make clear that there's additional oversight following any action by this board.
What would your feelings be if, if he took down the existing garage and built something on the exact same footprint that it's on now?
I mean, I definitely wouldn't be happy about it. We weren't happy that it was there. So if we have an opportunity to bring our backyard into existing codes, that's what I would prefer because, you know, really there was a reason why those codes were put in for green space in Old Niskuna and not having it just be filled with structures. So if I had my way, I would prefer to have it off my property line.
Ma'am, I got great concern here. And I see your concern. And I'm gonna relate back to 1933, we built this 2019. As the doctor said, it's fallen down. I'm very concerned that if we had a strong wind or a tree fell on it, it would collapse the whole building because the structure was probably, I would venture to say, some of it's rotten. Wouldn't it be better if he restructured it and built it? And he said you had no confidence in him, that he would do it. But he's not doing it. He's gonna have a contract to do that, am I correct? A contractor's gonna do that.
We've had the same experience.
Okay.
And it's really the garage...
What I'm trying to drive at, you said to, uh, the board here, that there's been no damage done to your foundation or to your property?
No additional damage, but a larger structure. And the structure that's falling down isn't the garage, it's the shed.
He's building basically the same thing.
No, the structure's going to be a lot bigger. The shed is just a small little shed. I don't know.
Yes, it's gonna be bigger, but it's not gonna be that much bigger that I don't think it would make that much difference, to tell you the truth. I've been a construction worker for years. So, you know. And I, and I understand your concern.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Could, could we have the applicant back?
Unless there's something, was there anything?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wasn't gonna cut you off.
So are you all set?
Is there anything else you wish to add before you sit down? Any other questions?
Could I ask some questions to the applicant?
Yes.
Maybe I misapprehended, uh, I've tried to read some of the, some of the notes and, you know, I, I take note that some of the materials that have been provided aren't as clear to me as some of the other, uh, building materials that we typically have presented to us. But what is the, what is the square footage of the existing shed, do you know?
This, um, it's approximately ten by ten. Right.
Okay. And the, do you have an exact square footage of the new proposed?
It was, it would essentially, um, be, it's, the current width is twenty, it would be six by twenty. So it's slightly larger. In, in terms of, in the notion of two separate structures versus incorporating, you know, creating one structure. Although that, um, so it'd be, it would be a little, it would be wider because it would be the width of the garage. It would be shorter because it's only six foot, not ten foot deep.
Can you clarify, please, what is deteriorating? Is it the garage that is deteriorating?
Yes.
Or is it the shed?
Both. I can show you photographs if you wanna look at them.
No, I just need to hear because people are hearing two different things.
No, that both are, both are deteriorating and, um, the, the garage, well, let's start with the shed. The shed is, is, um, old wood, chewed through everywhere.
I just need to hear that both, you said, state that both structures are deteriorating.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. If you look at the back wall of my garage, it's not upright. It's leaning. And its foundation is cracked. Um, there's, there's concrete foundation around the side, as well as a concrete floor. Cracks breaking, um, everywhere. Yes, it's, it's, it's in, in poor condition. And not amenable, not amenable to fixing. I'm sorry.
You're gonna replace the slab if it's approved, right?
Correct.
Another, so, just so I'm, maybe it's me. The current garage that sits there, you are going to put, if this is approved, a new garage, with the exception that you're going to move the front back two feet and the rear wall back two feet. So essentially, you're just gonna slide the existing structure, which will be a new structure, back two feet.
My goal actually is to add six feet at the end of the garage. So not just take the same, not take the same structure and just move it back two feet.
Okay.
But was to tear down the shed, add six feet to the back of the garage, which, that's where the eighteen-foot difference comes in because it would be well within the twenty-foot, um, offset. But it's the six foot that I would like to add at the back that now creates, um, storage space.
Okay. But in essence, you're moving, I'm looking at square footage. I'm trying, and I know it says it's five hundred and twenty square feet. I don't know what the square footage of what sits there now is, but I'm assuming if you're adding six feet at the back, but you're removing, you're, you're moving back two feet in the front, right?
Correct.
So do you have any idea what the current structure, the square footage is?
It's, um, well, let me just see.
Just the garage?
The garage is basically twenty by twenty.
Okay. Four hundred square feet.
Right. So it would then be twenty by twenty-six.
Okay.
Would be the, would be the new size of the garage.
Gotcha.
But the front of the garage would be two feet further back.
Correct.
If you were to be building on the property line, can you build on the property line and have all the construction done without using your neighbor's property?
You know, it's...
During the construction phase?
I mean, I'm, I'm not a, um, obviously a construction person. I mean, the only, I would hope that they, you know, maybe they can sort of demolish from the inside. I mean, it's, um, the only thing, um, is if, I mean, it needs an outside structure, it needs, so...
That's my question, is how do you put the paneling and...
Somebody, somebody has to stand there and, and, and put siding on, on that one side. And, um, I mean, that, you know, however the, the roof is constructed.
So Mr. Haber, it sounds like you would need your neighbor's cooperation. You're gonna need them to do that cooperation to some extent to, to be able to move forward with your project.
It's, you know, it's, um...
Have you spoken with your neighbor?
Well, they, they, um, this is an extraordinarily antagonistic, um, relationship at this point.
Kinda getting that.
And, um, they are, they have willingly used my, they used my driveway very willingly for ten years, in and out of my driveway. They actually still use my driveway. Um, their children have played on my driveway. So, and, um, it's, you know, the fact that they don't, they, they don't like that I'm going to build this and make it nicer, I can't, I can't, I'm not gonna make them happier by fixing it or not fixing it. Clearly, they would, they would assume leave the structure as is. I've left the structure as is for the thirteen years I've been there. The fact that it was a two-car garage, to be honest with you, was one of the factors why I bought the house. I wanted a house with a two-car garage. When I was looking all over Old Niskuna, driving around, that was sort of one of my criteria for finding a house. I wanted a house with, with two-car garage. The, and unfortunately, it's, that's where it sits. I, you know, it's, it's, it sits on that property line. If I could, build a new garage, a new driveway on the other side of their house and just give them a new driveway, I would do that in this quick, in a second. I can't. It's, it's not about to happen. I don't even think there's room to, for me to do that, even if I gave them the cash and said, "Here, go build a driveway on the other side, let it be." But, um, I don't think that they're, they would agree regardless. So unfortunately, you know, I'm, we're, I'm sort of stuck in terms of just the nature of property lines and, and structures. I mean, you know, if we moved it over six inches off the property line so somebody could stand in that six inches and do the siding and then it is what it is, that's possible. I, I will as well just, any, the water damage that they may have is not caused by my property. That's, the water runs, it's Regent, it runs down. That is, that is not from my property. Do I have, is there a slight slope in my driveway, slightly away from my house? Yes, there is. But when they, when a driveway's put in, it kinda makes sense. You don't want the hot water pooling by, by the house. The fact that some of theirs has been done, water pools at their back patio. That has nothing to do with me. That runs straight down off of, um, from Regent, right down to their property, and that was the way that the patio, unfortunately, was structured. It's not structured to run off, to, to have a, a pitch away from the house. It pools right next to that, excuse me, next to the house. So as far as I'm concerned, those, that argument has no, realistically has no bearing on my property, my property line, this, the, uh, uh, the current structure of what exists. You know, the, the lay of the land is such that Regent Street is higher than Myron Street, water tends to run that way. So, you know, that, um, that's not anything that was, as far as I can see, created by me, nor would be changed or worsened in, in the course of this process. The, you know, to maintaining structures that are falling down and chewed through and I don't really see a whole lot of value in that. I actually had considered replacing my shed at a point. And it basically occurred to me with the cost of a shed, and it's just gonna be chewed through again because it's this freestanding structure that they get in around, under, and whatnot. At least I have a, certainly a better chance with a new structure of a foundation that doesn't allow anything in, the floor is now solid instead of critters popping in and out of the floor and coming through the wall.
Ms. Robertson, um, how, how far would it have to be moved from the property line in order to not need a variance?
It's fifteen on that side. I just wanna clarify for the record that the pre-existing non-conforming act of God does seem to have an exception for accessory buildings and dwellings. So maybe the reason that we talk about that is because we usually talk about it in fences, but I think Keith is completely right. So if it's building, if he's building it back on the exact footprint, there's an exemption to the act of God there. Yeah.
I believe that's the way we've applied it always before, as long as I've been on this board, that as long as, if it was a pre-existing non-conforming, as long as it's built on the exact same footprint.
It doesn't require an act of God, it can be rebuilt.
Right. So the act of God, it, it occurs on any commercial thing or any, um, fence or anything like that, but there's a specific exemption for dwellings and accessory buildings. And it says that, that they can rebuild, you know, as long as this building or structure isn't altered, added to, or reconstructed to extend further into an already deficient yard space or to reduce an area deficient amount of land area dwelling. Yeah.
Okay. The, the petitioner said, uh, a little while ago that he would be willing to move the structure if it would, um, help the situation. You just said that, um, in your last situation, so...
With, mad, just, you know, the only thing from the one caveat would be it, because it would move it over that much more, I would almost need a little bit extra space again to push it back slightly further because of the nature of getting in and out of that garage because it's, you know, if I moved it the appropriate distance, shall we say, right? What is it, fifteen feet is, is the law? Now the thing is, way over here in, I mean, the whole driveway would have to be reconfigured. It would be a, a complete redo. So even, even, and that's, and that was part of the reason of keeping it in that, in that space and moving it back was making the, the two, of the two, the, the two garages, the one that is closer toward the house, when you, when you cut that space, you come very close to the corner of the house itself.
Okay. I'm a middle child. I try and keep everybody happy here. Is there some way?
Am I.
To, so, is there some way to move it slightly and, you know, mitigate the neighbors' concerns? Is there some amount to move it away from the property line to keep people happy?
I mean, I don't, I don't see that that is inconceivable.
Okay.
I don't. I don't, I'm not, I'm not being, I don't wanna be difficult from that standpoint. But again, the only issue...
Let me ask then, is there an amount?
If you could come up to the microphone so it can be heard.
That's a really tough call to make. My preference would obviously be to have it within the zoning board codes because, as he said, the reason why he bought that house was for a two-car garage. Why we bought our house was for the Old Niskuna green space. So having a larger structure, more driveway, more patio, more pavement, I do feel deteriorates my property. So I really don't know what that amount would have to be. It would definitely be more than six inches. You know, the fact that he doesn't wanna take more of his yard, I get, but...
We're trying to move it more to his...
Because my driveway, I can't use that eight feet of space for storage between our garages. That's where I kinda put my garbage barrels and my yard waste bins. Like, that's not really accessible storage space for me. And I would expect that if I were going to build onto my structure to give me more storage, I would assume I would need to incorporate that into reduction in my personal space, not going within the, the codes of where you're not allowed, allowed to build. So if he does want more space, I get it. You can build within your footprint and then come into his own yard. It's a twenty-foot wide space, six feet back. That's considerable, considerable amount of space. Like I said, it's pretty much the footprint of my home that's going to be built and re-poured and rebuilt and essentially right on the property line of my backyard. So I don't know what that amount would be, but it would definitely have to be more than six inches. I can speak, you know, to my husband about it, but I would think it would be at least the space that we give up to have that space, which, which would be eight feet. There is some green space next to our driveway, which we can't use, and our garage that we can't use.
Why can't you use it?
Well, it's not, it's, we could build a structure onto that, but I'm assuming if I was going to build a structure onto that, I would need to get a variance to build to my property line.
We're talking two different things, building and using.
I mean, we can use it, but it's spaced between two garages. What are you really gonna use, eight feet of space, twenty feet deep, just besides yard waste barrels, kids' bikes? Sometimes it's not really patio space, and yet our patio does flood. Our entire patio floods. We have to have a sump pump on our patio because it comes in through our foundation of our home. We have a huge water problem where we live. I swear, we jokingly say we're the lowest... on our patio because it comes in through our foundation of our home. We have a huge water problem where we live. I swear, we jokingly say we're the lowest point in Old Niskuna. We do have runoff. We can see it when the snow melts, it comes down from Regent, it comes off from his side. You can see it in the snow. But the low point is our back door. When we go down from our first floor, we go down a couple of stairs and that's where our patio is. So water on our patio literally will almost be pouring in our back door. So water is a huge problem for us. And when runoff happens and snow happens and it starts to melt, it's an enormous problem. My husband doesn't even put snow in between the garages anymore because there was so much water damage happening to our own garage that he doesn't put the snow back there. He snowblows it all to the front of the house, which I get, it's, it's a pain, but where we live, it's, we often have our basement flooding. So water is a huge problem. It's not just a minor problem, which, you know, acts of nature. It's, our basement is often wet and we have to, we run a dehumidifier 24/7. We have fans going in the basement. Our basement is not livable space because it is so damp, the walls seep. The same thing happens with our garage. So I mean, I get it, but water is a huge problem and I really don't want to have any more water incorporating on to our property. And if I had my way, I would move it away because then there would be more earth, more ground to absorb.
What are your views?
All the effects of water.
What are your views with regard to that structure being left on the exact same footprint, which he can build without a variance as opposed to?
Yeah, I mean, I get it. There'd be nothing I'd be able to do about that.
So with that knowledge and it being two feet further back from the back of the houses because he wants this extra swing space, what is your view, knowing that he can, that he could put something up on the exact same footprint?
I would say.
To being able to move it the two feet back and add six feet on it?
But that would allow a lot more pavement and still more water runoff if he wants to build it on the same space. I mean, obviously I have nothing that I can do about that, but I definitely don't want a larger structure, more pavement in my backyard.
The structures, my understanding is the structure's not going to be higher. You're going to have some more square footage, but I, I guess I'm missing how it's providing more water runoff to your property than exists now.
Well, because if you bump the garage two feet back, obviously that's going to be paved structure, which is not, is going to be impermeable. So that's going to add to the water runoff that is coming onto my property because most of the water from his patio in the runoff of his garage does come to my driveway, goes into my garage. So if it's an more impermeable space that's put on to your existing footprint, that's going to increase the water.
If you don't move it back two feet, it's still impermeable and it's going to run off the same way. It's running off.
No, because it would be on the same square footage.
But.
Because it's not going to be dirt in between, it's not going to end his driveway, have dirt and then have garage.
Does it water run off the roof?
But if it was two feet back, I guess I don't see how that wouldn't be additional impermeable surface.
It, it may very well be, but the point is, is what exists there now.
Right, what exists there now, I can't make any changes to. What I'm here for today is to make changes or stop any additional changes to negatively impact my property.
Ma'am. Let me, let me go back to something. I asked you 20 minutes ago. Did the doctor cause any water damage to your property and you said, no? Am I correct?
Did he particularly? No.
The question, answer the question.
That's what I'm answering. Did he? No, he didn't cause any.
Okay. I don't see after reading the prints, and I'm not too bad at that, looking through the structural here. Let me just backtrack a second. Is your elevation the same as his elevation?
No.
What's your elevation?
I'm not sure, but it's lower than his because it runs on our driveway. I'm not 100% sure, no.
So, what I'm saying is, I.
But when he turns on his hose, it runs, he, when he turns on his hose, it comes down the driveway.
I've been going through this methodically. I'm very well versed on this stuff. I don't see the problem. That's, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm looking hard for. I truly am. But I don't see the problem.
It's a larger structure, that's.
You're assuming that this is going to happen. You're assuming that's going to happen.
No, I'm, I'm.
But it hasn't happened.
I'm here because it, it, the request is a larger structure. That's why I'm here. I'm not here because of what might happen and what may not happen.
What ties into, was there any damage to your home? And you said, no.
I guess I don't understand what you're saying. Is there damage to my home?
Question. Was there any damage done to your property and you told this board, no? That's what you said.
But I, I don't understand how you're phrasing it.
And this has been up since 1933. And there's no damage and this is 2019.
I guess I, I mean, there's damage just because both of them are deteriorating surfaces. And if you increase the impermeable surface area, that does give more water damage to my property.
Question.
I guess I don't understand.
If I increase, if I hold those.
I don't know. Maybe, can I have it rephrased or I don't, I don't know what I'm not getting?
This is really. This is really?
Yeah.
Um, I, I guess I'm just, along the lines of some of the questioning before, trying to figure out a way that this is in a zero-sum game, meaning, uh, the, the only thing that we can rule upon is the, the variance. And we have to apply the rules that are laid out for us. We have, we have a card up there. It's it's a cheat sheet that comes out of the code. It says, this is what you have to apply. And some of the issues that you've raised are, uh, factors that we have to consider. Um, but I guess I'm just trying to figure out, it seems like the two main issues you brought up are the, the water issue and then the overall small, um, footprint of the, the, the two properties and their close proximity to each other. It doesn't seem like you can fix the close proximity issue. Um, no matter how we, we try to figure it out. If you move, uh, Dr. Haber's uh, proposed garage back in a different uh, to, closer to his house, it's going to impede his ability to use it for its intended purpose of getting cars in and out of the, uh, garage. I guess the, the only issue though, it seems to me that when Dr. Haber was speaking, he indicated that he was more than willing to try to address some of your concerns. And, you know, it, it seems the other concern is water runoff and how that can be. Um, that concern can be ameliorated. I, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm not a, I'm not an engineer, don't claim to be. Um, but it would seem to me that that would be something that it might be worthwhile to try to work to, um, see if that, i- i- if you, you know, i- if there's something that can be achieved that you, you and your benefit, your property can benefit as well from any proposed project because um, even if, even if his variance was not granted, there's not going to be anything that's going to stop him from rebuilding the structure. And that's going to still, at best, keep your situation the same as it is now, which does not sound satisfactory. So I guess, so I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. Is there, is there any way that we, you know, it, it's, it's outside the jurisdiction of this board? Um, this, the, the board just has to look at the, the variance and, and rule on the variance, applying the factors that we have before us. But outside of that, you know, this board's jurisdiction, maybe there's something that could be done between you and Dr. Haber. I, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either. I, I haven't seen anything. Like I said, I just heard about it from this letter, but I know I don't want a larger structure built along my property line.
Ma'am, if it was these, if it was same length of wall along the side of your property, but wider, so instead of making it six feet deeper, it was six feet wider, support him to put a snow blower and lawn mower so that what the wall you're looking at would be the same as you're looking at now, only two feet further back so he could get in and out of the garage easier, would that model, would that be helpful to your concerns of the size of the structure since you wouldn't have two more feet of roofline right on your property?
Oh, it'd be six, I think he's building it six.
Or six, six more feet of roofline. So if the, if it was in the, in the, it was made wider going into his backyard instead of deeper into the backyard.
That.
So that you would be looking at the same length of wall.
That would obviously be better, but if there's an opportunity to move a, a structure that's going to be torn down and needs to be approved through new variances, I would rather, if given the opportunity now to improve the, um, appearance of my property, I would rather get a building right off my property line.
I understand it.
It's right along.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, you, you heard me talking about making the structure wider instead of deeper. Is that something you could do?
Um.
I know it would cut the, the part of your, into some of your backyard that you would otherwise use.
Right.
But is that something you could do to help the situation with the length of the wall on her property line?
The, it, it, um, the downside, the substantial downside to that is what is directly behind the garage and that shed area is really already fairly poor, shall we say. It's, it's not been able to be maintained, whereas the rest of the yard has been, since I've moved there, I've redone it, it's replanted, it's, it's a nice yard. It's a peaceful space. Um, you know, that would cause, um, from my standpoint, substantial damage and from appearances standpoint, realistically, honestly, it's, it's uglier to have more ugly space than it is to have, take it, then take up essentially, you know, um, an added six feet and, you know, whatever this two feet back with essentially a brand-new structure. So it, it, so it would, from my perspective, it's more functional from that standpoint. It actually is going to look better from that standpoint. Um, it's, it, it means far less of ripping up, um, the work that we've done um, in terms of the, um, making it a nice backyard. I mean, it's, it, it, it used to be just clover and nothing, and we have nice grounds now. By the way, I did notice on this sheet, the garage was built in 33. Garage built in 33, 400 square foot.
What if you, that, that extra six feet of depth, if you didn't have it, if you kept it in the back but didn't have it the full 20 feet wide? So if you had it, um, 15 feet wide, so there would be five feet along her property line that you would have a five-foot setback.
Uh, yeah, I.
I'm just looking to see.
No, no, it's funny, no, I'm only, I'm only smiling because when I, when I drew up these plans, I actually drew up like six sets of plans of different variations of what could be created at the back. And honestly, that was, one of them was potentially all of these different variations on a theme of altering the, the, the backside. I mean, you know, if it, you know, let's say, um, we did that. I mean, we only made, you know, we kept the 20 feet on essentially, you know, where it is, but, but two feet back. And then let's say you only, if we, if we're going to add structure onto the back, that, that didn't necessarily go along the wall. I mean, that is conceivable as a structure. I still, the only thing I would say is I need, need, would like sufficient amount of space to, to be able to store things. Just from a, from a, um, a construction perspective, it just made more sense to have one big solid structure than angles, angles and what you're discussing. I mean, but I, I, I'd drawn up, um, a, a variation of plans and I did not want to give you guys all these six sets of plans that.
That's understandable.
Yeah.
Um, anything else anyone wishes to add? Anyone else in the audience who wants to be heard? Hearing none, I'd ask, any other questions from the board?
My basement is dry, by the way.
All right. Hearing none, I would ask if anyone wishes to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move that we approve the, the, the variance. I'm dealing with both variances at the same time. Let me see if I can state this in a succinct manner. Essentially, as we've established, Dr. Haber could tear down the existing structure and replace it on the footprint without a variance. By replacing the structure itself and taking down the shed, at least based on the schematic and the photo that he provided, it, it allows for additional quote-unquote, green space behind the garage towards the rear property line with the removal of the shed. The new structure, while it is going to be larger from a square footage standpoint, is not going to be higher. It's going to be the same existing height. It's going to exist in the same location along the property line. And I think, given the fact that you're taking down a deteriorating garage and a deteriorating shed will have a positive effect, not a negative effect on the character of the neighborhood. This shed, this, this garage has existed for, I'd try and do the math, but I probably wouldn't come out right.
Like 86 years.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For 86 years in this position and, and along this property line and the fact that it will be still along the property line, uh, I, I don't think is going to have a, a substantial change in the neighborhood. Looking at the configuration of where this is located, you can't conform to the existing zoning, the current zoning ordinances with a appropriate side yard setback without putting this somehow in the middle of the backyard, which I don't think you can do even with the current structure, without the necessity of at least a rear yard setback variance. And you would have to then change the configuration of the driveway. And I think it renders the property, uh, essentially you would consume the entire property with structure and eliminate what green space does exist currently. To some extent, obviously, the need for a variance is self-created, although that's not determinative. I don't think that, given some of the alterations that have been thrown out there about six feet wider versus six feet deeper is functional. If you look at the schematic, it will extend the garage essentially over or into the backyard, literally behind the house. I don't think that alternative is, is either functional or reasonable. Given the unique size and location of these properties in Old Niskuna has always been, always been an issue as long as I've been on this board, which is a long time in relation to any attempts to redo, change or reconfigure existing structures or placing new structures. So I, I don't think this is a unique problem to this variance or this specific piece of property. For those reasons, I move that we approve the variances requested.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion for all the reasons stated.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a discussion on the motion? I would ask if we could call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
I've been recused.
Oh, recused. Ms. McGinnis?
I vote no. I believe that, uh, the benefit can be achieved by other means. I think we provided several different alternatives. I don't, I mean, it's not necessarily an undesirable change to the neighborhood. The zoning did go into effect after the garage was built. However, we do now have zoning and the zoning says that, um, there are setbacks and, um, this is substantial, I believe. Um, I do think that there are adverse, um, environmental effects, um, when we pave that much property. I do think that it is self-created because again, we did provide, um, several other different, um, alternatives. Um, and I do think it's a unique variance for that neighborhood as, um, the majority of the houses in that part of town are one-car garages, not two. So for those reasons, I vote no.
Mr. Daley?
I vote yes.
Mr. Green?
I vote yes for the reasons stated.
Mr. Hoak?
Um, this is a tough one for me. Uh, I would have to vote no. Um, uh, the reason that I would vote no is that the benefit that you're seeking to achieve, you can largely achieve by rebuilding the garage on the existing footprint, uh, under the existing code without the need for variance. Um, with respect to an undesirable change in the neighborhood. Um, I, I don't believe that the, uh, the proposal would have an undesirable change in the neighborhood, but under the unique set of circumstances and the, uh, unique property footprint of this property and the surrounding properties, I do believe that the request is sub. property and the surrounding properties, I do believe that the request is substantial. And I do believe that there's an unknown with respect to the adverse physical or environmental impacts, effects on adjoining landowners, and that since the request is certainly self-created, although it's not determinative, weighing and balancing the criteria that we must apply, I would vote no on the motion.
Chairman Goodman.
I likewise see this as a close call, difficult situation, because we do have setback requirements. However, we in Old Niskiuna often are faced with a zoning ordinance that was put in place decades after the properties were built. Issue of whether, was raised whether or not it changes the character of the neighborhood because there are many one-car garages in Old Niskiuna. This particular property, it appears, has had a two-car garage dating back eighty-six years. So maintaining a two-car garage on the property, I don't think would be any change in the neighborhood or the character of the neighborhood, because that's what the neighborhood has had. We have to look at substantial, and if this was a brand-new request to put up a structure that never had been there, I would agree that this would be quite a substantial variance, and technically, it might therefore be, because of the technical nature. But the fact that this garage could be rebuilt on the exact same footprint that is there without any kind of variance means that what we're really looking at is the extra six feet attached to the back of it. And that I do not find to be substantial or any kind of character change in the neighborhood because of the fact that this is all the way in the backyard. I understand that there may be some additional surface that is now covered. There will, some of that is mitigated by the fact that the shed is gone, so there may be some extra square feet that is covered, but that is not going to be a substantial change in the number of square feet that is there. I do not believe that it is self-created because the garage has existed for twenty-six years, or, excuse me, for eighty-six years, and is now falling apart and needs to be replaced based on the testimony we have had. I don't think that there will be an adverse physical or environmental effects. And there's really no other way to achieve this benefit of having it, things in a single structure as opposed to a, the shed and a garage, and understanding that another shed at some point could be put in. And being able to move the garage back to allow the easier and safer navigation of the vehicles in and out of the garage is something that could not be done without moving at the two feet. So although I find it to be a difficult and closer call, I will vote yes on the motion and the variance is granted. I want to thank everyone who took the time to come out tonight for coming and expressing their concerns. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If we could call the next case, please?
The appeal of Julie Brookholder of 1410 Valencia Road, Niskiuna, New York, for a variance from Section 220-16E2, Section 220-53B, and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskiuna. Construct a front addition carport and front porch and a rear addition living on the property noted above. The property is located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district. Section 220-16E2 states that if seventy percent or more of the lot on the same side of the street within 500 feet of this lot has buildings on prior to July 1, 1971, then the front setback will be the average setback of those lots. As applied, the average front yard setback along Valencia Road is thirty-four feet. As proposed, the front addition extends to approximately twenty-six feet from the front property line. Therefore, an eight-foot front yard setback variance is required. Section 220-53B allows an addition to a non-conforming structure that brings it no nearer to the side line than the existing structure or one-half the required distance for the zoning district, whichever is greater. Section 220-13 Schedule IC requires a sideyard setback of fifteen feet. Since the existing house is only five feet from the side line, seven and a half feet becomes the minimum required side setback. As proposed, the rear addition will be five feet from the prop, from the sideline, and the front addition will be zero feet from the sideline. Therefore, both the 2.5-foot sideyard setback variance and a 7.5-foot sideyard variance, setback variance are required. Fourteen letters were mailed out and one response. The response was from M.K. and J. Virdal of 1403 Clifton Park Road. Size of the structure, as proposed, will make it appear that it is bursting off the lot. Result would be, we believe, not at all the appearance desired for the residential neighborhood.
If the applicant could please come forward and just briefly go over your application, the reasons for it, what you're hoping to achieve, what efforts you've done to mitigate the need for a variance, and why those efforts could not be achieved?
Sure. So we have three separate parts that we're talking about. There's an extension of the existing garage in the backyard of ten feet, staying in line with the current structure. And that's to, we have a camper and a fishing boat, and that's to allow both of them to be stored in there, so it's protecting them from theft and weather and such. And then we have the addition of a front porch, which would be partially open and partially enclosed, which would be a, you know, I have a picture, if you want to see, of what I'm hoping to do. And
If you, we'd like, that would be helpful if you bring it up.
Sure.
We would just ask that we'd be able to keep it as part of our record.
Something like this, where it's added to the front of the house. Yeah. Partial enclosure, partial open. Right now, the front of our house is completely flat, so trying to add some depth and curb appeal to it, while also giving up the mudroom sort of space so I can wrangle my children and not have water and mud everywhere. And then the third part that we were hoping to do is, there's currently in front of the garage about an eight-foot overhang. And I wanted to extend that out further till the, to the front edge of the house so that I can just have something to park under. And that part, I was also hoping to make a little wider than the current structure is because my car can't actually fit. It's not wide enough to fit, you know, today's cars are bigger than the one-car garage width that we have. So we have a few different issues that we're looking to achieve.
Okay.
I don't know which, what you want to talk about first.
I'm good, I understand the extension of the garage back. The, I guess I'm a little lost, and I need your
Sure.
Well, I actually, I actually need Laura's help. What's the issue with the front that she's seeking to do in the front of the house?
It's the average setback when all the houses were built.
Oh, we have that issue?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Hate that issue.
Me, too.
The weirdest issue, because I can never, okay. So that's purely just an average of the other properties? That's a setback issue.
And this doesn't bring it closer?
Yeah, I have all the measurements of the other properties.
Oh, okay.
And this won't bring it closer to the road than any, than and then
Well, actually, I'm trying to be only as close as one other house that's already on here. I'm not trying to go any further than anyone else has. There's one house that, on our side, that's four houses down, that has something very similar, a front porch added that's all enclosed, and it would be the same depth from the street ours would be as theirs.
It wasn't so much you, it was me. I just didn't understand.
Oh, no, that's fine.
I didn't understand why that one needed a variance.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that brings me to number three here. Explain to me again what you're looking to do with the front of the garage area.
So currently, I have some drawings that I did. I don't know if it would help you to see.
I'm a visual learner.
Okay, well, I'll show you what I have, and then we'll see if I, if it helps at all.
Hang on.
Sure, okay. So here's two sets of drawings that we tried to make as close to scale as possible. So the first one is a side view of the house. So this would be the extension of the garage in the back, and then this would be the extension of the new area, partial enclosed, partial not enclosed.
That's, that's in front of your front door?
In front of the front door, exactly, yeah.
You said you have
This is a current overhang, so
How far in front? Is that in front of the garage door?
Yes, exactly. So here's the garage door, and then this is an overhang. It's just a roof, you know, and there's some of the houses above it. So this is just an overhang right now, but it's not enough to fit a car under, and the current post on the corner of it, I mean, I can't actually fit
So what you're seeking to do there is, is to make a longer and wider overhang?
I was hoping to bring it out to about here, you know, wherever we discussed, and whatever worked for everyone, just so that I could fit my car and have a covered parking spot.
Because it's phrased in the application, I think I saw it in here as a carport.
That's what I call, I don't know if that's not the right word, but it would be open, like, no sides. Yeah, okay.
I wouldn't use that word because I don't know that that's
It's not a completely
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not enclosed, but
I understand. The last carport case we had
Oh, is that bad? Well, we don't need to use that.
Didn't look at all like this.
Bigger than the house.
Oh, well, no.
But that's what it is. It's a carport.
Yeah, basically, just a place to park so it don't get rained in.
So are you, are you proposing then, and I, and I, I've seen what the existing, are you keeping it the same look, roof siding, all that type?
Same materials? Yes, yes. In the front, we would probably have, you know, the house is all white, we would have white siding, the front of the, of the, which part are you talking about? The carport part?
Yeah, the carport.
Yeah, I would have the same, basically, the roof that's already there right now would just have to extend out further.
But as, but as I see this, the part, the widening part, I'm not understanding how you're going to deal with that.
So I would only widen it starting on the corner of the garage, so right here.
Right.
I would just move a post out further to the edge of the property, and then the new roof would carry over in front of that.
So you would actually, the, the
Mr. Frey, can you, can you turn the microphone back around to you?
Sure.
The roof pitches up. So you're going to take that entire pitch of the roof and widen that out?
No, not the whole roof that's there, only the part that I have to. And I don't know exactly, I need to speak with an engineer when this part comes up. And I, and I fully understand that. My dad is a retired contractor, and we've been looking and trying to discuss options and stuff, and I, this part I understand is definitely
I'm just trying, because obviously, you've heard, one of our criteria is this character of the neighborhood, and does it, does it
Does it
The look of it, and I'm having a little trouble in my mind conceiving what that is going to look like if, if it's not the entire pitch up to that peak. If that's not widened out, then how this is going to look?
I fully appreciate that. I don't have an exact answer because I haven't spoken to an, a design, you know, an architect.
No, I understand. No, that's fine.
Not sure. I'm not sure, the character is definitely very important to me as well. I don't want to make my house look worse. I want to make it look better, you know, so I don't have a really clear answer on that part of the roof right now.
Got a question for you, Julie.
Yeah.
Your neighbor, the person who wrote the letter, can you tell me where they live, on which side?
They must live behind our house. I have no idea who that is. What was their name again?
The address was 1403
1403 Clifton Park Road.
So I really don't know who that is or, or how they would possibly be affected, honestly. They live behind our house, you know, like, I don't know. But it's not the people right, that's not the people right behind us that we share a backyard with, you know, share a fence line with, I don't believe, because I think their names are Chris and, you know.
So you don't know that name or
I don't know who they are or where exactly their house is.
Have you talked to some of your neighbor about your project?
Yeah, I actually have gotten signatures from seven, one, seven of the neighbors showing full support of it. And these are the neighbors on my street that are, you know, next door, across the street, across the street, you know, everyone that would actually see it all the time.
Was there anyone who said no to signing it?
No.
Okay.
And I, the reason I didn't get more, something
Can we keep it for our record?
Yeah, I made a copy of that, so, or do you want the original?
What do you think?
We should have the original in the records.
So the rear garage extension, the extension back from the garage takes, it follows the house line and takes you no closer to the side property line, right?
Exactly, yeah.
And that's to accommodate a boat and a trailer in the garage, correct?
Yes, so no one has to look at it.
Right.
Yeah.
And the, the carport is wider because your, your vehicle cannot fit within that sideline, is that correct?
Exactly. That was the goal.
What, what kind of vehicle are you driving?
A Toyota Highlander, not any, not anything really big, just a mid-sized SUV.
Okay.
But that does take you on top of the property line, the expansion of the carport.
It, it would, yes, but I mean, I could go one foot in, two feet, you know, and then I could probably still open the doors if I parked under there. It's more if the post is there, would I be able to open the door to the car or hit the house on the side, if that makes sense? And just to note, the neighbor, the neighbor whose property line we're sharing here, they have about forty-something feet of grass before we're near their house. So we're nowhere near their house or any structures. They're one of the people that showed support for it. They don't have any concerns. I've shown them my drawings and talked about it, so.
And the widening is so you can put cars side by side?
No, just to fit one car, because it's really a one
You can't put the car in the garage because you have the boat and the trailer, and the garage isn't wide enough.
Yeah, if I put my car in the garage, I, I have to get my kids out in the driveway, and then I have to kind of squeeze in. I mean, it's like two inches on either side from the mirrors, so it's a small one-car.
Ms. Brookholder, you spoke about how the front of your house, the proposed addition of the mudroom, is consistent with at least one other house on your block. Are there any other carport-type additions on any of the houses in your neighborhood?
No, not in the front, not, I don't, I'm not aware of any, no.
And did all the neighbors that signed this, did they have a full understanding that you intended to put a carport onto your property?
I believe so. I talked about it with all of them, answered any questions they had.
Do we know which part of this plan the neighbor who wrote was complaining about?
Yeah, she dropped it off to me. I think she was just considering the whole footprint of the expansion to be too much for the lot.
Okay.
But this is a neighbor who's behind, right?
Right, and not even directly behind.
Okay. She's behind you.
So they're just on another street. I don't know if they're even touching our yard at all. I'm not sure.
Our notification is we do a buffer of 100 feet around the lot line, so it's going to notify, like, multiple people on the backside of the property.
They might be kitty-corner or something, I'm not sure.
I'm looking at a photo of the front of your house, all right? Who knows if it's, when it was taken, but it, you can't, in the existing driveway in carport, you can't park a car there?
Well, no, it's not long enough.
Okay, look, forget
But the width, no, because I can't open the door, I hit the house, like, because of the post. It's the post that's the problem. of the post. It's the post that's the problem, the corner post that's holding it up on the, you'll be looking at the right. You can't park under it and actually open the door.
The picture he's looking at, can you see if that's your house?
Is that your house?
Because it looks like you could park many cars in there.
No, this, because, see that where the garage ends and there's a post there, you can't fit the car there.
No, he's talking in the front. Can you park?
Well, what I'm talking about is, is you see where the black, or the dark car is parked? You're telling me that if that car wasn't there, you couldn't fit that other car in that space? And it's because of the post that holds the
The post, because it's only as wide as the garage, so I can't actually open the door. That's, yeah. That black car is parked in front of the post.
Well, let me ask you this question. You're, you're seeking to expand that carport all the way to the lot line, which looks like it's how far? From the edge of the house?
Five feet.
From the house all the way over the lot line's five feet?
Five feet.
So in actuality, once you do that and expand and lengthen the carport, there would actually be quite a bit of room on either side? I'm, I'm just trying to see if
Yeah.
I, I'm having a real struggle with the look of this carport because it's going to come all the way out from your house to the lot line.
Mm-hmm.
And you're not going to follow the roof line, so
Yeah.
You understand?
I fully understand, and yeah.
Well, I'm trying to think of maybe some less
I've been trying to think, too, like, what's a way that I can get my car, you know, under something and open the doors? And I don't have, I would love an idea. I don't know what else I could do other than widen it. I'm fully open to hearing any ideas.
The idea man is Mr. Green. He has the good ideas.
My idea is no carport.
And that's, that's completely fine, too. Yeah, I mean Yeah.
Having this discussion.
So
Once he doesn't have carports.
Right. That is on the least priority for me, you know. I mean, I, I understand. I'm not entirely sure what it would look like because I don't know exactly how it would be built and made it look perfectly right and in sync with everything.
Carports, they never look good.
Okay, then. Just shovel off the car.
You came in here as a negotiation, right? You threw out the carport, and you're willing to get rid of the carport.
So I'm the person with, like, the carport situation that I like to see, I like We have too many people talking at once right now. I like to see the design of a carport before anything happens. I'm interested in, like, possibly moving forward on the first two items.
Sure.
And then seeing if possibly, you know, there's interest in coming back once there's a design with the carport.
Okay.
Because without seeing it, seeing an actual design, you know, carports are kind of iffy. I've yet to see one that looks nice.
Yeah.
And fits in with the design.
Yeah, I just want to assure you that if there were a carport in front of me, I would consider the carport in front of me. I haven't ruled out carports, carports, just because they're carports.
Right.
But I don't, as my fellow board member here is rightly pointing out, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't
Okay.
It's hard for me to
I fully agree, honestly. I, I
There's some other things here, though, that I can envision, and I do
Let's just scratch the carport for now.
We can take each of the variances separately.
Yeah, okay. Let's just
Mr., Chairman, I do, I have been passed a map locating 1403 Clifton Park. It does appear that 1403 is the, one of the farthest properties within the notice criteria.
I, I thank you. Yeah, I'm going to pass this down. I ask it be made part of the record.
So you're saying it's one of the furthest ones away from us?
That's what it appears from the map, but
Yeah, I, I'm not sure where it is.
My opinion would be for the applicant to withdraw because if you take action on a carport, and it's the design, they can't bring it back.
You got to change it to some extent, right?
You can amend it. You can withdraw that.
You can take action on it right now, but they would have to change it to bring it back.
Yeah.
She could amend her appeal and withdraw that variance for now, and just in case that footprint was really meaningful to her after she engineered it. Otherwise, it would be from coming back in the exact footprint.
Okay, so that gives me a chance to come back. If I say take it away now, then it gives me the chance, oh, I really want that to come back later and have a better idea.
Yeah, I mean
If you're willing to withdraw
I am.
What happens is if we move forward with it today, you won't be able to come back with the exact same plan in the future.
Okay.
Because it would have already been decided.
Right. So you're basically reserving your options for the future.
Okay, that sounds good.
So right now, we're down to two requested variances. You have any other questions?
She needs to formally withdraw.
Okay, what do I do?
Oh, are you formally withdrawing the request for the carport?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So we will deem that withdrawn, and we are now down to the two variances that are still being requested. You have anything else you wish to add for that?
Nope. I gave you my drawings and what I hope to have it look like, which I think keeps in touch with the character of the neighborhood and our home specifically, and showed my neighbor's support. I have verbal support from the people directly behind us, but I didn't get a signature from them, and from the other house right next door to us as well, but they were traveling, so I couldn't get a signature from them.
Any other questions from members of the board? Does anyone in the audience wish to be heard for or against the application? Any motions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move that we approve the two variances that are before us. Notably, dealing with the extension, the rear extension of the garage, I note that while it does require a variance because of where it's being placed, the extension doesn't bring it any closer to the property line than, than the existing house line, so it's consistent with that. I don't, given, given the entire square footage and surface here, I don't find it to be substantial, relatively speaking. I don't think that, that particular variance is going to change the character of the neighborhood. As the applicant has said, you've got a very, very large buffer zone to the adjoining property, and again, it's going to, the, the extension is going to be consistent with the existing house line. You have a huge, well, huge, you have a large backyard, so you're a great distance away from, from the rear property line. The other variance, I, I will admittedly have always struggled with this, this variable front yard setback based on the percentages of lots. I find it to be strangely arbitrary, but given the photograph the applicant has provided, I think it's, it's very tastefully done. I don't think it's going to, it certainly, it doesn't seem substantial. And again, based on the applicant's representation, there is at least one other property that has a similar situation. You're still, it appears, 20 feet back from the front property line, according to the diagram provided to us. And again, I think it's actually going to improve the, the front of the house and the character of the neighborhood. And for those reasons, I'd move that we grant both variances before us.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion for the reasons stated.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. I would ask if we could call the roll, please?
Mr. Frerich?
Yes.
Mr. Luthright?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Daley?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
With regard to this motion, approve the two variances before the board. Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes, for the reasons stated. The most, the variant, the two variances are granted. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you so very much.
Consider that carport carefully before
I, I really will. I
Your dad has some great ideas there, I can
He's just glad he's not going to have to build it.
Thank you. Oh, before everyone stands up, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone, for your time.